Okay, good evening everyone. It is six o'clock, so I now reconvene to the regular meeting of the Board of Education, Thursday, March 4th at 6:00 PM. With Bridge, Cruz, Gagne, and Schaefer present in the boardroom, and Mr. Naugh is absent this evening. Meeting is being livestreamed on the YouTube channel for Chino Valley Unified School District. Pat, please.
The Board met in closed session from 4:45 PM to 5:48 regarding conference with Legal Counselants in Superior Litigation One Possible Case, Student Readmission Matters, Conference with Labor Negotiators ACT and CSEA, Public Employee Appointment Elementary and Junior High School Assistant Principals, and Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Release. The Board of Education took the following actions. Voted to appoint Stephenette Graham as Assistant Principal, Lidle Elementary School, effective date to be determined by a roll call vote with Bridge, Cruz, Gagne, Schaefer voting yes and not absent. Appointed Teresa Moore Assistant Principal Magnolia Junior High School, effective date March 5, 2021 by a roll call vote with Bridge, Cruz, Gagne, Schaefer voting yes and not absent. Appointed Denise Gonzalez as Assistant Principal Magnolia Junior High School, effective date to be determined by a roll call vote with Bridge, Cruz, Gagne, Schaefer voting yes and not absent. Appointed John Troy as Assistant Principal Cal-Aero K8, effective date to be determined by a roll call vote with Bridge, Cruz, Gagne, Schaefer voting yes and not absent. And voted to appoint Stephen De Francis as Assistant Principal Woodcrest Junior High School, effective March 8, 2021 by a roll call vote with Bridge, Cruz, Gagne, Schaefer voting yes and not absent. No further action was taken which requires public disclosure.
Thank you, Pat. I will be leading us in the pledge tonight. Please stand. Place your hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we go to our staff report, I just will remind everyone that we do have plexiglass screens between us, my little public announcement, and we will be wearing our masks as much as possible. So we'll move on now to item 1C, Staff Report. It's our annual LCAP update goal number one. Please, Mrs. Fellows.
President Schaefer, Members of the Board, Superintendent Enfield, Cabinet, and Community, we have our first update to the Board on the Local Control and Accountability Plan. Our annual update to the Board will be on the progress of LCAP Goal One, which ties to State Priorities 1, 2, and 7. This slide highlights... I'll wait, I think it's... Our annual update to the Board will be on the progress of LCAP Goal One, which ties to State Priorities 1, 2, and 7. This slide highlights the actions and services to actualize Goal One. All students are provided a high-quality teaching and learning environment. HR attends recruitment fairs to recruit high-quality credential teachers, especially in the hard-to-fill areas like math and science. Elementary, secondary have a process for reviewing and evaluating the most up-to-date standards-aligned materials. Through the deferred maintenance program, we are able to address routine facility needs. For technology, there is a systematic effort in replacing and procuring technology equipment. Through universal screening efforts, we are able to provide more students access to gate services. New and old teachers have benefited from district and site professional development with the assistance of instructional coaches. Finally, in order for all students to have a high-quality learning environment, students have access to a broad course of study. The metrics for Goal One are considered local metrics and are reported as met, not met, or not met for two years. There are eight annual measurable outcomes to evaluate our progress of Goal One. I will be reviewing four of the measurable outcomes with you. One, credential teachers. The school accountability report is used to measure our progress. In the 2021 school year, 100% of teachers had appropriate credentials for the grade level and core subject area they are assigned to teach. At the time of reporting, we had 1.6 teacher vacancies. We have met our desired outcome. Next is facilities. We are happy to report that 100% of facilities received a good or higher rating as measured by the facilities inspection tool. We have met our desired outcome. Standards-aligned materials. No insufficiencies were identified at the time of validation of the district and site-reported sufficiency information, or insufficiencies identified were resolved within two months. For technology, our goal is that all teachers and students have access to updated technology that is four years old or newer. This year, with the LCAP funds that have been allocated for technology, we were able to upgrade, deploy, and replace devices for teachers and students. In the 1920 school year, there were over 7,400 student devices deployed to our sites, and over 513 devices were refreshed. Currently, there is a total of 26,847 student devices, which includes desktops and laptops throughout the district. Windows laptops make up 5,511, Windows desktops equal 1,582, Mac desktops equals 441, and Chromebooks equal the bulk of them at 19,456. 100% of teachers have at least one computer or laptop, provided that is less than four years old. 90% of teachers have at least one computer or laptop, provided that is less than three years old. We have met our desired outcomes for both facilities and technology. State Priority Two, which is implementation of the state standards, is evaluated using a reflection tool that covers these five topic areas. We have met this priority. In the next six slides, each of the content areas are evaluated on a scale of 1 through 5. One, being exploration and research, finding out more information. Two, beginning development, planning, scheduled professional learning to put in place. Three, initial implementation, professional learning has begun with affected staff members. Four, full implementation, all affected staff members have been provided professional learning for teaching. And five, full implementation and sustainability, all affected staff members have been provided professional learning for teaching to the recently adopted academic standards and/or curriculum frameworks as a continuous cycle of improvement exists to address areas of need. We are working to Level 5 in all areas. There has been a systematic process in place to gauge professional learning needs. As you can see, English Language Arts, English Language Development, Mathematics have been rated a 5. Next Generation Science Standards and History Social Science have been rated a 4. NGSS, we are currently at the process of piloting science books in the 6th grade and at the secondary level, and elementary will still need to pilot. For history and science, it's due to new frameworks that were adopted by the state of California. For our instructional materials, we are firming up a process to enhance the current instructional materials to better support student learning gaps. Once we have that, we will move to a 5. Policies and programs, professional learning, community, and classroom learning rounds are in place. Through instructional coaches, co-planning, co-teaching opportunities are available, and there are coaching opportunities for English Language Development. We have a rating of 5 in English Language Arts, English Language Development, and Mathematics. For our implementation of state standards in English Language Arts, English Language Development, and Mathematics are rated a 5. Next Generation Science Standards and History Social Science are rated 4. Our CTE rating is based on teacher-reported efficacy. VAPA and World Languages and PE continue to be at initial implementation. Our health education is at full implementation. For engagement of school leadership at the site level... I'm sorry, I'm moving the slides, but it's not changing on the screen. Engagement of school leadership. At the site level, we have begun the practice of looking at staff professional learning needs. At the individual teacher level, we are at the initial implementation as we have begun the process of providing support for standards that have not yet been mastered. This also occurs at the site level. We are working towards individualizing PD for these areas in process. In our effort to accurately identify our gate students, we began universal screening for all 2nd graders in 2015 and 2016. Universal screening means everyone has the opportunity to be screened with permission. The numbers on this slide illustrate our pre-universal screening data, and then our progression, which shows an overall annual increase. The percentage and true number are both increasing. This number is important because our goal is to be able to get 10% of our 2nd grade students identified. As you can see, we've met this goal. Next is our Broad Course of Study. We have met our desired outcome for Broad Course of Study, which essentially means that we ensure all Chino Valley Unified students have access to and take all the required courses adopted by our school district. Over and beyond the Broad Course of Study, we also provide music instruction starting at the 2nd grade level and supplement district operations. For elementary music, we have 12 music teachers that serves grades 2 through 6. Over the last four years, the music program expanded to include orchestra programs at six of our elementary schools: Country Springs, Dixon, Eagle Canyon, Hidden Trails, Lidle, and Rolling Ridge. During the 1920 school year, we've also been able to enhance our music programs at both elementary and secondary. Elementary music, to support distance learning projectors and laptops, were purchased, tuning tools, sacks, trumpets, trombones, metronomes, maracas, egg shakers, and so many other tools for music. For secondary music, we have had students who have attended at honor guards and festivals. This completes our annual update to the Board of Education. Are there any questions?
Great, thank you, Mrs. Fellows, for the presentation. I will ask Board if there are any questions or comments.
You know, every year, we have kids going to community college, we have kids going to the UC system, Cal State, and Ivy Leagues. Every year is like that. We have doubled our gates, students, we have the best music program, we are the best of the West, Chino Valley Unified School District. And it just exemplifies, when you look at what was discussed by our best coordinator, AP, that we are excelling and we are meeting expectations. So, great job to teachers, staff, and everybody here on board. Good job. Thank you.
Great. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Bridge, please.
Thank you, and thank you, Mrs. Fellows, for that presentation. I just wanted to quickly comment on State Priority One, that I was very pleased to see that we are at 100% of correct teacher assignments. I remember when that first came out about misassignments and the concern that it brought among some staff members. I'm glad to see that we're at 100%, and I congratulate you for getting that done. Also, on the facilities with good or higher rating. Having been on the Measure G Citizens Oversight Committee and seeing what we're doing about modernization and the work there, to see that we're with a good or higher rating, which I'm very pleased to see that, and that we're going to continue to do that. So, just thank you very much for the presentation, and we're definitely on the right track. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Fellows, I had a quick question on page seven. That's where it actually starts, and then it goes through the exploration, beginning, initial implementation, and so forth. I understand that the Next Generation Science Standards and History Social Science are a little behind because of the framework changes at the state level?
Yes, for History Social Science, they are newer frameworks, and for NGSS, we are piloting those books, piloting and soon to be piloting the science books.
Okay, what is the timeline, or is our hope for implementation, full implementation, and then fully implemented and sustainable on those two categories?
Based on where we are in our implementation, in a couple years.
Okay. Assuming things don't change again.
Correct.
Okay. And I just had one other quick question. I know things are still difficult with virtual meetings and Zooms. Have we reached out to and contacted our LCAP Parent Advisory Committee, district level wide, and maybe started Zoom meetings or anything with them?
Yes, we recently had our LCAP Advisory Committee meeting a week ago.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Mrs. Fellows. Okay, moving on now to item 1D. It looks like Justin is with us tonight. It's good to see you again. You're up.
Hi, everyone. How you guys doing?
Good.
Hello. Okay. Can I hear my report now?
Absolutely, please, begin.
Okay. Good evening. At our recent Superintendent Student Advisory Council meeting, student leaders had the opportunity to participate in LCAP, an accountability plan. Student input was valid, and students gave important feedback. All schools have been engaged in keeping students connected and engaged with virtual rallies and motivational days. Student leaders have made a continuous attempt to keep our campuses connected and to maintain school spirit. For instance, Townsend Junior High School has been helping our students connect and engage by creating what has been called a photo festival. Students can share their creativity through photography, which we feature on our social media platforms. Townsend has also had a film festival, which is the same, except it is through video. The emphasis is everyone is important. Townsend wants to create an award system to award students who are working hard each and every day. During the positivity project, where emails are sent to every student in school, students are reminded to show love and kindness to each other. Canyon Hills Junior High School has been starting motivational Mondays, TIP Tuesdays, Worthy Wednesdays, Thriving Thursdays, and Fun Fact Fridays. At Canyon Hills Junior High School, the goal is to post on our Google Classroom Cohards and Instagram every day as well. They are also doing weekly tech videos on Fridays to make sure students are informed on what is going at school and what has been planned for them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Justin. It was good to see you again. Okay, moving on to comments from our employee representatives. Let's start with Mrs. Barbara Bearden.
Good evening, President Schaefer, School Board members, Dr. Enfield, Cabinet, and Chino Valley Community. What an exciting day the elementary site administrators had today. It was exhilarating to have our kindergarten to 2nd grade Cohort A students on campus for their first day of in-person instruction. We're looking forward to welcoming the Cohort B kindergarten of 2nd graders tomorrow and all kindergarten to 6th grade students next week. The teachers were amazing as they taught students how to navigate this new normal with physical distancing. We are so fortunate in Chino Valley to have school and district staff who work endlessly for the success of our students. We are also very appreciative of the support from our families as we worked to reopen our schools. I'd like to congratulate the new assistant principals who were appointed this evening. The CHAMP Board looks forward to working with you. And CHAMP would also like to wish Maggie Button, the Director of Technology, good luck as she transitions to her new position at the San Bernardino County Office of Education. Maggie, thank you for all you did to support our schools and district as the director, especially when schools closed due to the pandemic. Finally, I'd like to thank the district officials who visited school sites today. We appreciate the time you took out of your schedules to visit. Thank you for your time. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Bearden. And Brenda Walker let me know that she was not going to be able to join us, and Mr. Hernandez from CSEA is having connection issues. So we'll go ahead and move on now to item 1F. Comments from the audience on non-agenda items. We are now at comments on items not on the agenda. As noted in the public advisory posted in the agenda, staff will now read into the record the names and comments of emails received during the specified window and in accordance with Board Bylaw 9323, meeting conduct. The comments will be read in the order that email was received. Email comments on agenda items will be accepted during consideration of that item. Pat, did we receive any emails for non-agenda items?
We received four emails, and they are as follows. Stephen Ladaga and Jennifer Ladaga submitted the following email comments separately. "Good afternoon, Board members and Superintendent Enfield. Hope is important because it can make the present moment less difficult to bear. If we believe that tomorrow will be better, we can bear a hardship today. I am writing today in regard to the announcement made this morning regarding a settlement that has taken place between Governor Newsom and the state of California and two student football players in San Diego County. This settlement by the state agrees to open up all indoor and outdoor high school sports to be played as soon as their county is below 14 per 100,000 cases, which San Bernardino County is currently sitting at 9 per 100,000. I am requesting that the Board direct Superintendent Enfield to immediately create a clear plan to share with students and family in regard to how all sports will be returning to training and scheduling games. With limited time left in this school year, I think we can all agree that swift action is required to open the remainder of outdoor and all indoor sports for our students, and that the time is now for students to be hearing from their coaches about their plan to return to playing. Our high school students have been locked down and isolated for an entire year, and this Board, Superintendent, athletic directors, and coaches have had plenty of time to prepare for this moment. And our athletes deserve answers, guidance, schedules, and action to return them to campus and the sport they love. It was awesome to see the images on social media of CBUSD students returning to school today. We are excited for the children and their families. Now it is time to see all of our high school athletes, including indoor sports, posting on social media about their games. Please, Board members, ensure that this is a priority for the Superintendent and instruct staff to provide updates for all sports by Friday, March 12." Today's announcement gives thousands of athletes the one thing they have been waiting for and had almost given up on: hope. It is up to you now to make this hope in reality. Our children are depending on you. William Price. "I am the parent of a student at Cal-Aero Preserve Academy, and I am frustrated. My frustration began last summer when the district failed to survey parents about their preferred learning model prior to Cal-Aero's first day of school. As a result, students in tracks A, B, and C were not grouped into blended and distant learning cohorts. Our students have spent 2/3rds of the year with the same teacher. Now, this learning relationship will be broken when a large portion of students will be placed with new teachers depending on their chosen learning model. The district committed to a plan that would be least disruptive to students, yet Cal-Aero students were an afterthought in this process. Our school is the only one in the districts whose students may be assigned a new teacher for the final three months of school. Even worse, for most of Track A, which has been on break for the past month, distant learning students will not have a chance to log on with their teachers and classmates to say goodbye. As I write this comment on Thursday afternoon, I still have no idea who my son's teacher will be tomorrow, or who he will be placed into combo class, or if he will be placed into a combo class, something that we fear will reduce dedicated instructional time. With less than 24 hours to go, we have no idea what to expect. Because this transition was rushed, Cal-Aero parents had to choose a learning model with limited details about safety plans and protocols. Just yesterday, we participated in a presentation about the return to campus. This was the first time we had an opportunity to learn about Cal-Aero's specific plans. Parents should have received this communication well in advance of completing the survey. Some parents may have chosen a different learning model if they had received this information sooner. Moving forward, I implore you to consider Cal-Aero and our unique schedule when you plan for COVID mitigation and potential models for next school year. Our students should not be disproportionately impacted by a lack of planning." Lisa Fraga. "Dear Chino Valley Unified School District and School Board members, as a concerned 6th grade student at Cal-Aero, I think reopening schools was a terrible decision. To start, the students that chose blended will be getting only two days of education as opposed to getting five. The three days that these students are not in the classroom, they will have to teach themselves that day. So for the kids who are having a rough time in distance learning, they may start struggling even more since they will only be in school for two days. I chose distance learning because I want to protect my health and not risk getting the virus. And for students like me, the forgotten ones in tracks A, B, or C, many of us won't have a teacher that we've been working with for the past eight months. My teacher has been giving me the best education that she can provide. She has worked so hard to teach us this year. It's upsetting that I won't be able to finish my school year with my amazing teacher. Given that we only have 2.5 months left of the 2020-2021 school year, what's the point of going back to school now? Why did you disrupt us? Why couldn't we just finish the school year with teachers we have been working with all this time? You failed us again. You failed us yet again at Cal-Aero. I am 12 years old and could see how wrong this is, how wrong this all is for kids. Why couldn't you after all? You're the grownups. These are the questions I want answers to. Thank you for your time. A concerned and sad 6th grade student. There are no further email comments submitted."
Thank you, Pat, and thank you to those who took the time to submit comments to the Board this evening. Moving on to item 1G, Changes and Deletions. Pat, do we have any changes and deletions this evening?
There are none.
Okay, moving on now to item 2, Action Items. Item 2A1 is 2021 California School Board Association Delegate Assembly Election. Recommend the Board of Education vote for no more than six candidates to the California School Board Association Delegate Assembly, Subregion 16B, for a term beginning April 1st, 2021 through March 31st, 2023. Pat, are there any email comments?
There are none.
Thank you. Now I have a motion.
Motion.
Now I have a second.
Second.
And the motion by Mr. Cruz, and the second by Mr. Bridge. Comments, questions, or discussion?
Yeah, I'm a member of CSBA, so I'm going to nominate myself for the next 2021 through 2023.
Okay, so we have Mr. Cruz. Mr. Cruz, can I add some names in addition to yours?
Of course.
Thank you. I'd also like to nominate Mr. Tom Courtney. Mr. Cruz is on the list. Ms. Sherry McGaw, Mr. Eric Swanson, Ms. Monde Tacler, excuse me, and Ms. Kathy Thompson. Are there any comments, questions, or related to the... Are there any comments, questions, or related to the list of names?
No, you haven't mentioned the one that I was thinking of.
Okay. So here we no further discussion up on the dais. Those six names will be the names submitted. Pat, do you need me to read those for the record?
Yes. The following six names will be submitted to the CSBA Board. Tom Courtney, Andrew Cruz, Sherry McGaw, Eric Swanson, Mondi Taylor, and Kathy Thompson.
Okay. Any other questions or comments before we vote? Mr. Bridge?
Hi.
Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Gagne?
Yes.
An Ime yes. Preferential is gone?
Yes.
Oh, you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes unanimously 4-0 with one absence, and preferential is yes. Moving on to item 2A2, Resolution 2020-2021-25, intent to comply with the California Voting Rights Act. Recommend the Board of Education adopt Resolution 2020-2021-25, intent to comply with the California Voting Rights Act. Pat, are there any email comments?
There are none.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
The motion by Mrs. Gagne, the second by Mr. Bridge. Dr. Enfield, is there any background you'd like to add to this, or are we good?
No, we're good.
Okay. Any comments or questions from board? Seeing none, we will vote. Mr. Bridge?
Yes.
Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Gagne?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Preferential?
Yes.
Motion passes 4 to 0 with one absence, and preferential voting yes. Moving on now to consent items. We are now at consent. Pat, did you receive any emails regarding consent items?
None.
Board members, do we have any polls? Mr. Bridge?
None.
Mr. Cruz?
None.
Mrs. Gagne?
None.
And for administrative reasons, I will poll item 3C1, page 26. For the remainder of the consent items, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Gagne, second by Mr. Bridge. We will now vote. Mr. Bridge?
Yes.
Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Gagne?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Preferential?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 4 to 0 with one absence, and preferential voting yes. We'll now go to page 26 for item 3C1. These were both student readmission cases. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Again, these were both student readmission cases because I believe, Ms. Gagne, you are going to abstain from voting?
Yes.
Okay. It left less than four. I vote for these, so we do have to pull them and take them individually now. We will start with student case 1920-18. There's any comments, questions, or discussion? Mr. Bridge?
Yes.
Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
I'm a yes, and Mrs. Gagne is an abstention. That motion passes, that one passes 3-0. We can do these under one, correct, Mr. Dr. Enfield? Now, reference 1920-30. Any comments or questions? Mr. Bridge?
Yes.
Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
I'm a yes. That one also passes 3 to 0 with one absence and one abstention. Moving on to information items. Are there any questions or comments on information items? Seeing none. We'll move on now to communications. Board communications. Mr. Cruz, please.
Hi. No, I attended Howard Cattle today this morning. It was a good day. A lot of kids were very happy, and parents too, the parents watching the kids entering the gate, and the kids are excited. You know, I was talking to a mother, and you know, every time she would pass by the school, the boy would say, you know, "When can I come back? When I come back?" And you know, today he came back. And it was great. It was a great time for the children. And hopefully, these next two months, it's, you know, big party, you know, I know there's state testings and so forth, but you know, it's a good time to come together, to communicate, to have fun outside the playground, just going back to normalcy. So today was a good day. So, good job, kiddos. And then, and then, you know, Dr. Enfield, I know it's difficult, you know, the regressing movements that parents desire between the learning modalities. And, you know, I don't know who's getting what, but, you know, sometimes, you know, the parents are having, you know, difficult times during these moments, and if they're asking for a request, you know, we should thoroughly understand where they're coming from and have, having compassionate towards what they're preferring now. And, I mean, that's, I know we're trying our best, but it sure is good to really understand what some of these people are going through. And I just hope that we do, we make a big difference in helping these people, and, you know, if they've changed their mind, that we could help them. And also, board member Bobby Gristle's daughter, she wasn't able to send it to Pat Kaler, so I'm going to read it out. There's some questions she's asking. So hopefully, Dr. Enfield, that you could explain some of these. So, "My name is Brittany, and my son is fifth grade student at Liberty Elementary School. I'm running you today to address issues and concerns with the blended model distance learning. Now that my son at elementary school is opening, we have finally been informed on how the blended learning will look, and I'm absolutely not happy with this at all. My son will be going from receiving five days of instruction in front of his teacher online to now two days of in-person learning, with one online minimum day that will be spent. Our students will be receiving less time in front of their teachers, going from five days now only to two days with a tiny hour and a half minimum day. Question: How are the state requirements for additional school hours being met if our children are only going to school for two days and one minimum day? And as I, then I do not understand why our school just refuses to open back full-time to five days of instruction. She mentions private schools such as Ontario Christian is up five days a week. And then, another question: Why are we not addressing the mental issues that our children have faced during this pandemic? And this blended learning is going to make it so much more difficult for them to adjust once they go back to school and see their friends and be in person. They are not going to want to have to go back home and sit in front of a computer." This parent was very passionate, and, you know, I spoke to her over the phone, and, you know, she wanted this comment to be sent to Pat Kaler, but we were having, she had problems. So I read it, and hopefully you can answer those two questions. Thank you.
Is that it, Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Bridge?
Thank you, President Schaefer. I, with the start of campus student return today, I just wanted to say thank you to our CSEA staff and teachers for their work in getting the classrooms safely set up for our students' return. I know it's a job moving the personal protective equipment out to the sites and then getting set up. When I observed a couple of classrooms a few weeks ago with our special ed cohorts and seeing what all was done, I was very impressed, and I know it takes a lot of time and work, and I just wanted to thank them for that. Also, I was sorry I couldn't do any observation this morning with the start of school, as my wife was getting her second dose of the COVID vaccine out in Yucipa this morning. We already had that appointment and couldn't change it. But I did want to thank Principal Miller over at Chino High for showing me the vaccination site that was set up at Chino High for our teachers and staff about a week and a half ago. And thank you to Mr. Wrightout and the staff for getting that set up. I was very, very impressed. It went as smoothly as the one my wife was at this morning. She was in and out in 30 minutes, and I saw teachers, you know, getting in and out very quickly. I fortunately, or unfortunately, went to the Speedway on Tuesday, and while the county did a good job in setting it up, when you're setting it up for 3,000 people, it took three hours for me to get through the line. And so, seeing what went on at Chino High and with the district being able to get those vaccination appointments for our teachers, I was very pleased to see that and very confident in our students' return with that happening. And lastly, this is March. It's Women's History Month, and I just wanted to recognize that. We saw her writing that all month. Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Gagne, please.
Yes, good evening. To echo Mr. Bridge's comments, I'd like to thank all of our teacher staff, the entire CBUSD community for our first day of in-person learning. I know that it was a challenge, and there were a lot of obstacles to be tackled, but in feedback that I've received from parents, educators, and staff alike, I think there was also sort of a relief to be back, you know, partially in an in-person learning context. I'd also like to thank, we've had many students email us over the last couple of weeks expressing concerns and/or endorsements of, you know, reopening our campuses to in-person learning. And I'd just like to thank those students for taking the time and being invested in their education. I know some students ran petitions, surveys, a lot of grassroots organizing was happening to communicate, you know, how they and their colleagues felt. So I appreciate that effort and that passion, and I appreciate you taking the time to reach out to this board. Dr. Enfield, I do have a couple of questions, though. I've been receiving several questions from a variety of parents, and so I felt that due to the number of these questions, it might be good to address these at the board meeting. First and foremost, and I know this is, you know, going quite a bit of time in advance due to unknowns with COVID-19, but do we have any tentative plans for the next academic year is the first question? And secondary to that, I think that there is some confusion about why we are not back in full in-person learning. And I appreciate the confusion because the rules have changed, new plans have come out. Every day, something seems to shift a little bit. But many parents run to the impression that once we hit that 7 per 100,000 for our secondary schools, they'd be able to reopen. And that's clear. What's not clear is why we see private schools in the area that may be open and our public schools, and it's not just our district, other public schools are facing this challenge, are not immediately opening to full in-person learning. And I know last meeting, you, you know, commented on why this may be the case, but would you mind sort of articulating those state guidelines and sort of why we had to reopen in this fashion?
Yeah, the reason we have to open in this fashion is being able to meet the criteria that's set up by the state for the social distancing in the classroom. And so we don't have enough space in the classroom to bring every single student back and meet that requirement. That's a requirement of the state. And so that's why we've brought them back in the AB, the AB, so that we have half the students there, we're able easily with half to meet those requirements. It's when we bring back all the students, and it has to be all the students across the district. And so every single classroom needs to be able to meet that requirement. I can't just bring one school back and, because this school can meet it, but this one can't, and they don't bring them back. So it's one of those all or nothings. And so when you go through some of our larger classrooms at the secondary specifically, you have a number, you'll run up to 35, 36 students potentially in a classroom, and so you have to meet those requirements, and we don't have those spaces. So I'm assuming at the, and I'm going to say this, I'm assuming at the private schools, they have fewer students in those classes, and they can go ahead and meet those requirements. That's not just a Chino issue, that is an issue for most public schools across the state in meeting those guidelines. So we're, if those guidelines change, and we're hoping that they will make some modifications to those, because currently, those same guidelines, doesn't matter if you're in purple, red, orange, or yellow, those guidelines still are the same for all the different colors. For us, doesn't make sense. You would think those guidelines, they would ease off as you move down into the different colors, but currently, that's where it's at. We're hoping they're going to make some changes, and in doing so, then we can bring the kids back full-time. But that's our goal. We'll continue to have conversations with the county health department, especially because the numbers are looking good. A couple of our indicators, one is in orange, the second indicator is very close to being in orange, and we're just waiting for that one to get to red, then we can bring the students back. And if they can, all three indicators get into orange and move into another tier, that's the conversations, and so that's where we're at.
Thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you. Dr. Enfield, please.
All right. Today was another emotional day across our district. I know a lot of our staff and parents and our students were very excited to be here, and it was a day that we got to bring a second group of our students back. Our special ed cohorts had been here, and we're able today to bring our TK through second grade. And again, I want to personally thank all of our classified staff for being able to make that happen. If it wasn't for the work that they do behind the scenes in all the prep and everything that they do, we would not have been able to have such a smooth opening. I also want to thank our certificated staff and our teachers for their professionalism, their flexibility, and for them to be able to pivot so quickly. It's a testament to how much they care about our students to get back. And if you look across our county, I don't believe you'll find another school district that was able to pivot as quickly as we were to bring our kids back. And again, that's a testament to our classified and our certificated staff to be able to do that, because they care about our students and wanted to get them back. The other part I want to thank is our school site administration for their leadership and their support to provide to all of our staff to make this happen. And again, we have a great staff across our district, and they're able to do these type of things to make it happen so quickly. Again, I'd challenge to find another district that moved this quickly and brought the kids back into a very, very safe learning environment. And when you walked around the campuses, we had staff all out and about, and it was a very, very, it was a great day. It was a great day to see kids back on the campus. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. I just have a couple of comments. The first is, I was able to visit Eagle Canyon Elementary this morning and walk a couple of the classrooms, and I was not sure what I was expecting, but I was taken back by just the level of calm on campus. It was, it was kind of, it was almost kind of surreal, actually. The students were focused, and they were focused on what their teachers were saying and what they were supposed to be doing, and it was just, it was just really nice to see them back and to see them kind of getting into the groove, so to speak, with what is going to be going on and how school's going to be, at least for the remainder of this school year, it looks like. So I was extremely impressed with that. I also drove around and looked at a couple of other campuses, the parking lots of a couple of our other elementary schools. Super impressed with the way the administrators had set up the parking lots with cones and signs and everything else for a smooth drop-off. And so far, so good. I have heard only great things about the kids coming back today on the first day. So I wanted to take this opportunity to put out my sincere thanks to all of our elementary administrators, our teachers, and all of our staff members. You guys pivoted very quickly, like Dr. Enfield said, and I had no doubt that you could do this, and you guys did an outstanding job in preparing for and having our students return to in-person instruction. So again, thank you very, very much. No committee reports tonight. I will just throw one other thing out. I did receive some emails from Congresswoman Kim's office, who covers the Chino Hills portion of our district, and Congresswoman Torres's office, who covers the Chino and I believe our South Ontario portion. It is time for the 2021 Congressional Art Competition. If you are interested in participating, please visit their website. If you live in Chino Hills, again, it's Congresswoman Kim's. And if you live in Chino or South Ontario, it's Congresswoman Torres's office. I believe the submissions have to be, you have to have your artwork submitted by April 26th. So again, go to their different websites for information and details. That is all I have, so I will adjourn this regular meeting of the Board of Education at 6:49 PM.